All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and bringing us together to transact county business. We pray for guidance and direction each time we get together. In fact, during every hour of every day, we pray that you would just use us, Lord, to do what is best for Titus County and for the citizens here. Just be with us on these two agenda items today that we might make wise decisions. We turn this agenda over to you in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is the second day of November 2022. This is a special meeting that I was asked to put together, and so we will get started. We've got two agenda items here that are maybe somewhat slightly related, but nonetheless, item number one is to discuss the process of hiring a county fire department fire chief, including a job description and a salary range with possible action. And Commissioner Parchman asked me to put this together. Commissioner Parchman, I'm not sure that I know any more about this than you do. I may just turn it over to you for at least initial comments, and then we can all join in at that point.
Well, I'd have wanted to put this meeting together today so we could come up with a salary base for a county fire chief and see what the best qualifications or what else qualifications are going to require to hire a fire chief. So that's kind of what I had in mind.
And I think at the time that you and I first discussed this, there was probably some concern on all of our beheads about how are the procedures involved in going about this might be impacted by any intentions we had of using American Rescue Plan funds to do this. And so I think Barbara did reach out to Mark Taylor, and Mark responded. Did you see his response, Barbara?
I did. I also called him and dissented him about that because they're, I'm surprised at the decrease in the number of requirements when you're going to be doing payroll.
As opposed to buying stuff?
As opposed to procurement, when you're required to follow our standard processes. So I looked in our handbook. Our standard processes require that the announcements for job openings be jolly clear, but not limited to advertising to local newspapers and postings on the Titus County Port House bulletin. Newspaper advertisements generally for a minimum of two times during a seven-day period. They may, the job openings may also be registered with Texas Work Solutions Northeast Texas. So we have to follow what our policy is and move forward from there.
But basically, you got from his email what I got, is that there was not going to be the long list of requirements that there might be in the procurement that we would, that we know we're going to have to deal with, with American Rescue Plan. So essentially, we're going to abide by our own policies as far as how we post this, which would be the smart thing to do anyway. You want to cast a broad net for something like this, but we don't have to have March involvement so much on this one. We may run it by him, but we want to be sure that we advertise in the right places to satisfy our requirements, but also at the same time to be sure that we're, you know, looking in the right place and we're attracting the right person.
So actually, I put together just a preliminary newspaper notice. There's one in all y'all's places. I filed it off what Smith County's doing. Their notice says Smith County, but ours is Titus County, about applications for the position of fire chief-fire marshal. And so where the blank lines there are the items that I think we need to determine today. The first one is application, job description, and proposed salary range are available by contacting. And then I have a blank there because when you look at our policy, it says each official having a job opening should be responsible for posting that opening. We'll get it in the newspaper for you, but I need to know who we're going to have receive those applications.
And we're going to allow those to be faxed, emailed, hand-delivered?
That's yours, whatever you want.
I mean, we can, we can do any and all of those.
The other thing that I have in here is to know that the most qualified applicant will be selected by Commissioner's Court. Applicants are encouraged to apply by November 15th. That makes the requirements of being in the newspaper twice. The selected applicant will be responsible for starting the Titus County Fire Department and then again, who to contact and how to contact them for more information. And then we also need to know the address and the email address where we're going to have those sent back to. Is it going to be two to one to commissioners? It's going to be your office? It's going to be my office? Just, you know, that's what we need to know in order to put it here in the newspaper.
Okay.
And also, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and put it on our website, too, so that those individuals could go there directly without having to find the newspaper.
Sure. All right. Jeff, what are your ideas on that? Who should, who should receive these? Do one of you want to receive these so you get first look at that?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I can get the emails. I'm not always in my office to receive them as far as that goes if somebody wants to hand-deliver one. I didn't know if it would be good to have them delivered to James since he's always in the office and know somebody's always going to be there to give them.
That's fine. I guess that's a good idea. So we want to make the mailing address, physical mailing address be our office, Suite We could use James's email address, fax machine. I guess we could use that fax number. And then as soon as we receive those, how would you guys like to be notified of that? Just maybe send you a text message that we've got this? Do you want us to make copies? Do you want us to just accumulate these in our office? What would you like to do?
Maybe just come to the office and look at them instead of making copies and all that.
You know, and I have no idea whether we're going to get a slew of these, whether we're going to get one or two. If we make you aware by text message, come by and take a look, and then if you feel like you want to get a copy of that, then we can certainly make a copy for you.
Sounds good.
Sound all right?
Sounds good.
And we'll have contact James at your office number there?
Yeah.
Okay. How about that, Barbara?
That sounds good to me. We have the standard application that Titus County has used for quite some time. Y'all just want to continue with that?
Gosh, I'd like to, I personally would rather see a resume of the caliber of person that I think you're looking for here. If they don't have a resume, they need to learn how to make one and get one. Our little, our little application might be fine for name, address, and phone number and previous work history. I think that...
I believe that we are required to have any applicant fill out an application, but we can add whatever we want to do, so we'll add resume to that.
We're required to have an application?
Mm-hmm.
Where does it say that? Why would that be different from a resume? In other words, making them fill out?
Which doesn't have a signature and it doesn't have a certification at the bottom that all the hours should be corrected, face or ability.
Okay.
Because if then you found something that's not true, you can dismiss them for falsifying documents.
Okay. All right. Good reason. All right. So we want an application and resume, and the application can be obtained through those, any of those contact items that we've given them? And did you say make a link on our, on our website for an application? Does that even exist right now? It does exist? Okay.
On page at the bottom left, it says job postings.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, do we also want a list of references? I don't know, does this application have?
I think it does. Not sure.
It does.
Why don't we say a resume, a resume with references? Or, or make a separate?
Well, references are listed on here.
Yes, they are.
They're all listed.
Well, sometimes they'll put, you know...
See, resume?
Well, or they'll put on there, you know, will supply if needed or something like that. I've gotten that on countless when I was looking for custodial help, and more often than not, they wouldn't even fill it out. But I would think maybe put a statement there in that ad, references mandatory or, you know, please.
Reference required, including, I mean, resume required, including references?
Yeah, I think so. All right. And the skills, knowledge, and ability, where did this come from? Anybody supply that?
That's the second page.
Uh-huh. Got it from Hopkins County. Yeah, that's Hopkins, yeah.
So this is not necessarily applicable looking for the chief?
No.
No. Well, it's applicable, I believe, to every organization, to every person within their organization. But that's what we need to do. We need to have a job description for what this person's going to be for us.
Okay.
Mr. Parchman got these from Hopkins County, and also with your place, you have something from Smith County. I just Googled it, and they are currently looking for a deputy fire marshal, not their head fire marshal, but the deputy. So you have a list of, you know, another counties to look at.
That is a deputy fire marshal as opposed to a fire chief. I don't know that they're interchangeable. I'm sure there's a lot of these attributes that would work well for both, but I'm not sure this encompasses. I don't know enough about the differentiation between the, the definition. Guys, I'm going to let you all pretty well run, you know, run this however you want. I just need some guidance from you or some direction, leadership, what, what you want to do here.
I've got a question. Are we going ahead and go through with this before we even negotiate or anything with the city?
Well, that's probably the elephant in the room. That's kind of what I want to know.
I think it's throwing a false sense of whatever to the city that, oh, well, we, there's no sense in us negotiating with them because they're already trying to hire a chief. So I think it's something that we need to look at long and hard before we do anything like this.
Well, I got that call from the city, from, from the city manager and from the fire chief, and I said, look, you know, we've, we've got to be doing two things at the same time. We've got to be beginning the process of the formation of a county fire department, but that doesn't mean that just because we get that ball going, that we're not still interested in talking about working out financial arrangements with the city. I said, you, you can understand that. We can't put one on hold while we work solely on the other. We got to be going forward. Now, at the point where you see us hiring somebody and signing a contract with them, that'll be a pretty good indication that, you know, we've made a firm decision, but in the meantime, we've got to at least explore this. We've got to be laying the groundwork, and I think that probably hiring that fire chief is probably the first place to start. So I wouldn't let the grass grow under your feet and not do anything. I think that you can put these items together. When you're ready for Barbara to post that in the paper, tell her she's, she's ready to go here quickly.
Well, I'm not ready to go quickly. I'm ready to do whatever it is that the court wants to do.
Well, you've done, I'm just saying, you've done your homework and you've given us some suggested dates as to when to run that, and I appreciate that. You're always prepared, but yeah, once you do put that in the paper and start getting these resumes and these guys start calling, let's say you get two or three well-qualified people, you know, you need to be prepared with what you're going to tell. Oh, well, we're just, we're just seeing what's out there, or yeah, we're serious about hiring you.
That's why I said what I did. I just don't think that, that until we know a little further, if, if they're really willing to negotiate with us, if there's any reason to, to do anything right now. That's just me.
And Mr. Parker, I agree with you. My concern is that we get somebody in here that, that y'all determined would be a good fit, and then we negotiate with the county and that man or woman has resigned from their current position wherever they are, and then we don't need them.
Don't want that to happen.
Exactly.
We want to make sure we don't do that to anyone, I think.
Well, and I think you've got several, you've got several days, if not a few weeks, of preparing a job description. This one's got a lot of information on it, but I think you can be working on an ad like we're talking about here today. We decided where to send them to. You all can look over this skills, knowledge, and ability, duties and responsibilities, draft something, have that prepared before you ever call the newspaper to place an ad. All that stuff doesn't just happen in 15 minutes when you decide to place your ad, but no, I don't think you should place this ad until you've absolutely decided. Because like Barbara said, you could have somebody that literally said, well, by golly, I'm, I, I know they'll hire me. I'm going to go in there and turn in my two weeks' notice right now because I'm going to get that job in Mount Pleasant. You don't want to do that. You got to be solid on what it is, the course of action that you're going to take. How do the rest of y'all feel about that?
Like I said, we got to do, we've got to make a move regardless how we do, but we have to have, make, be prepared because we've just got very little time.
Okay. Are any of you prepared to place this ad today if you had it all together?
Well, I, I mean, I still think, you know, I would like to negotiate with the city, and I have talked to the city manager on that, and he said he would try to get back with me sometime this week, but after I told him, I said, time is too precious. We only got here to put this thing together and work, you know, time to stick away every day. So, I mean, hold on.
Go ahead.
But no, the, the door's still open as far as that goes. I mean, if they want to come to me with a good set come, or then we, you know, can't refuse. I mean, I'm all for it, but like Dana said, we got to, we got to keep moving forward every day till that, you know, till they come to us and with a proposal, you know.
Well, I don't think it's them coming to us. I think it's us going to them with, with something and saying, are y'all willing to do this? If they're not willing to do that, then we need to keep talking until we can get something worked out.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, how long do you wait? You know, who's waiting on who? You know, you've been to, you've had a conversation with the city manager on at least a couple of occasions?
We had to go with them, and they didn't want to put it off till after the first year, and I told the city manager, I said, we can't wait that long. I said, we need to do something now. You know, I don't want to wait two months and then three, you know, three months behind before we start a fire department, and then we're seven months before we can do anything. So, I mean, I don't see why we can't do it in this month and get something going now if we're going to do it. I mean, we already went to them and tried to negotiate with them so far.
We have not carried them a written proposal of, of what we want, though. It's just been talked back and forth. We need a written proposal as to what all of us are agree, you know, agree upon, and then take it to them and say, this is what we will propose. Will y'all even consider this? And...
Why don't we do that and then get this together, too, and make the decision on the 14th of our next commissioner's meeting? If we're going to go ahead and place the ad or accept a proposal with Mount Pleasant, really close, maybe just a few more days to get it ironed out, maybe we can get an answer against them in about two weeks, and...
Well, do any, do any of you feel like your conversation have been fruitful enough where a deal is close? Or are we still hundreds of thousands of dollars?
I don't think we're close enough to what we want, what I want. I think, I think we're way off, but I mean, if it'll, you know, make you feel better about, hey, we did all we can, we can come up with some numbers and send it to, send it their way for a three-year contract or a five, or a five-year.
They're not going to give you an out, a 12-month out regardless of what contract you're in there, what they would express to us.
And we did bring them a 5% annual increase that was turned down during the negotiations right off the bat with limited discussion.
Right. So I... Is this wishful thinking, or do we have concrete reason to believe that a deal is imminent?
I just think it's wishful thinking.
Okay. So I'll ask you, are you ready to post a job?
Well, like I said, you know, we get a written deal and, and give it to them, and they need to look at it as fast as they can and give us the answer back, and then that way we can move forward. You know, they can, you know, they can, all he could give to them and let them look at it, and they give, he could give them, they give him the answer, and if they say no, we just, they're going to come back and say no to us. We need to start.
Okay.
I don't think we need to wait two weeks.
It'd be about a week, wait till the Monday week, and we can make our decision. We'll get this all together. And do y'all have some numbers you want to do as far as what you would do? Would you consider a three-year or a five? I mean, I'd rather do a five-year if they would just round it up to a certain number.
I'd rather do a five-year, too.
And my number's probably not going to be their number. I would propose 1.3 million for three years or 1.3 million for five years. That's where I'm at.
I'd say five years.
Well, five years would be better.
Yeah, but you know, if you give it for three, you know, but I'm just, I'm just saying that I don't think them numbers are going to even be close to their numbers, but we don't know that.
We could try and see. I mean, I don't think they're going to, I think it's going to be, they're going to want more than that.
I simply played it one at 1.5, and I'm not going that far. That's, so, you know, you can give it to them or whatever, but I just don't think they'll agree with that 1.3. You know, we need to give them something to look at, and where we can have it back within a week or so and, hey, we need to start. We need to get our feet on the ground and going. Because the longer we drag our feet, the less we've got time to do it.
Well, I can assure you that the length of the contract has never been a sticking point with them. They just seem to have the longer the better, and they've explained their reasons why. I think that the dollar amount that you're willing to pay them is what stands in the way of a deal being made.
We don't give them $300,000. We're going with a one-year contract, and we were paying them last year.
Well, again, we can feel as self-righteous as we want to feel, but if it doesn't get the job done, it doesn't get the job done. Now, if that's what you want to propose to them and give them X amount of time, two weeks or before our November 14th meeting, that's, that's fine. But nothing that I've heard indicates to me they're willing to provide fire service at that, at that kind of price.
Not on those terms, so for that kind of money, I think we ought to need to move forward on our own department regardless of we just simply can't afford it.
Like I said, we give them a written, if they want a written proposal, we need to write it, get it over with, send it to them.
Well, I think you and Jeff have had good conversations, and the city manager appreciated your visit. I would suggest that you make an appointment with him and try that again, but make it clear that your next commissioner's court meeting will be on the 14th of November, and at that time, we'll, our plan will be to let a job opening be posted.
The sooner the better.
I followed the day and we scheduled a meeting soon.
We need to, we need to fix something up, carry it to him, letterhead or something or what.
I don't think that there's anything magic about that. I think that the dollar amount that you're going to give him, he knows you'll honor Okay. How much more? Yes, ma'am?
I think we also need an out in that contract besides through default. The current, the current proposed contract did not include any way to get out of that without default. And I believe that John Martin's contact required that we also have some way to get out of that. So that's my suggestion to you.
And again, I don't know how many ways they're going to tell us no, but sure, throw that in there. But I think they've answered it about every single time with a clear no. But again, that's how negotiations are, are done, I suppose, and...
I'd like to also put in there, you know, that the county is over the volunteers in a three-year deal. If we have to get emergency management guy, we need to take control. That's because we pay the volunteers, and then we need to have our own meetings and Get emergency management coordinator. We need to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm not, I don't know about all this, but...
Don't forget the fire chief. He'll have the emergency management deal anyway.
Okay. Well, then I, if you're going to have all these items in there, I would suggest that you put something together in writing. I don't think it has to be on formal letterhead. I think, write it up and present it, but I, I think it's a long shot myself. Okay. How much more work do you want to do on this today? I mean, that's what we're here for.
Instead of salary range while we're here. I mean, that's what the meeting was about. Yeah, that's true.
Right.
Back to that, there's still a five-year deal with the city, 1.3 with a one-year out. Just get as long as we can, probably be the best deal.
When you say one year out, let's say they're going to commit to, you want them to commit to 1.3 million, which is lower than any of the subsequent years on their contract, and you also want to be able to give them a one-year notice and say, sorry, we don't want to pay...
We have to have an out in it.
We don't want to pay it somehow.
Without having to pay the whole five years.
It thought like he would take a certain amount and then come back to us if they needed money like they used to do it, come to court, and if they need $50,000 or $100,000, they would present it to the court. He said he would, they would be good with that, but he was going to present that to the council and see what they thought, but hadn't heard anything else from them.
Well, I know that they had a meeting last night. I don't know any details from that meeting.
I haven't heard either, so...
Well, again, if you're going to put something together, I'd put it in writing, and if you've got these others, okay, well, now that we got you to, got you to agree to 1.3 with a one-year out, now we want to do this, and we can't keep adding things to it. I think you need to...
I understand that.
Put your best foot forward, put it in writing, handwrite it. You don't even need to type it up. Just give him something that he can, he can look at and show to his counsel. But I would set a deadline on it because, again, you can't get serious about this fire chief hire until you've made up your mind. So that'll be going on simultaneously to talking about fire chief. What is your pay range here? You've got some, you've got plenty of information here to put together, a job description, which somebody would like to have, and I think that we should mention that in the ad, that, you know, job description is available. Please call, and we will provide that for you. Have you thought about what kind of pay you're willing to give to this position?
I was kind of thinking it needs to work from $65,000 to $75,000 range, and then if we make them the emergency management coordinator, we can probably put that around $1,500 a month and add it on top of that.
I like that. I like this job description, Hopkins County for fire chief slash fire marshal, but in nature of scope or accountability, it's funny to add one more point, be knowledgeable with the fire grants and willing to help attain grants for fire grants. I don't see nothing like that written in here. They should be pretty knowledgeable about fire grants if they want to be a fire chief. I'd like to add that, too.
Well, I would say that one of you take on the responsibility of drafting, drafting it the way you see it, and then let each commissioner read over it and make suggestions. Let Barbara read over it, make suggestions. I'll be happy to read over it, make suggestions. read over it, make suggestions, I'll be happy to read over it and make suggestions. But those were good, those were good thoughts.
What are y'all thoughts on the salary please?
I like the salary deal, 65 to 75.
That's, that, you know, they're gonna...
I would say up to a dollar figure. I mean, nobody says, okay, well, I'll come to work for the low end of that. They're gonna always want the high end, so you give them what the high end is based on experience. All right, well, what else do you want to accomplish on this?
Actually, I have a couple of things on this Hopkins County job description that I wanted to just bring to everyone's attention.
Okay, this, you're talking about this page right here?
No, that's page two, you're talking about page one, you should have one there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Parkman posted that last time, I'm gonna have to talk that way.
All right.
The gentleman who came and spoke to us said that they are also EES certified, so this, this job description includes emergency medical services and also code inspection and enforcement programs. I believe that that's what Clint Bane does for the county. So, we would need to take out the emergency medical service and the code inspection enforcement, unless we just say that that's related to fire. I don't know where Mr. Bane, I don't know what his scope of duties would be.
I don't really do a fire code. Bane does, he does, he does safety on the environmental, on the environmental, so that would be part of the fire department.
But the emergency management needs to come off. When you aren't preparing that, that's just something, something to consider.
Well, I, I look at it as if he's qualified for the fire chief, he ought to be the emergency manager anyway, regardless of do his salary set like it is instead of adding more money. Because, you know, that's most of...
I'm talking about EMT, this is related to like, you know, the ambulance.
Okay, right.
I may be wrong, I mean, I don't know. I just read through this and just those things and the other thing I suggest is where it says nature and scope, I think it needs to have one more item that says the ability to provide the nature and scope duties of the captain, driver, engineer, and firefighter, because like you said, I think the fire chief needs to be able to do all of those things. And they're not, it's not listed here, it's assumed, I'm sure, but, you know, it's always better if you just put it, put it out there. So, those are the only, those are the only things that I have questions.
Okay, this concept of an emergency management coordinator, you're talking about our county fire chief taking on that role for the county while the city also has their own, rather than having a comprehensive emergency management coordinator for the entire county?
Yeah, I just, I just think it's a conflict of interest.
How is it a conflict of interest?
Well, I just, you know, he works for the county and the city and we just need our own. That's what, that's how I feel.
So, you're gonna have two guys in charge when you have a county-wide?
Well, the city guy in South Springs, he is the emergency, he's the fire chief and the emergency management guy.
For the city as well?
For the county, just for the county. The city has their own.
You're sure about that?
Yes.
I think you just have one per county.
Yeah.
So, we just need one.
You, you should, you should verify that, because it seems to me like you, that would be a conflict of interest to me, when if you have two guys with the same title of emergency management coordinator, that seems like a...
Well, we, we've discussed that ad and he said the same thing, it's a conflict of interest.
Having one?
Having two, having one, yeah, yes.
So, he's in favor of splitting it and having two?
That's my exception of it, with yours, Jeff?
Okay. I, I think that's a critical mistake, is my opinion.
A lot of counties have, the county judge is the emergency management coordinator.
What are you laughing about? That, that is, would be a disaster too. You want somebody with the caliber of Larry McCray that is respected across this entire state for being able to manage an emergency of the magnitude where you call in your emergency management coordinator? If you're pulling together two guys that are potentially vying for command over a particular situation, let's say that it affected the county and the city, let's say that you had a tornado or massive flooding that was in both the city and inside the county, you're gonna be assigning duties to those two guys? That's, that seems crazy.
We don't have authority to do that. That is set up by to choose an emergency management coordinator by law. The judge of the county, this is a countywide job, every mayor of every municipality in that county, so that would be Mount Pleasant's mayor, Talco's mayor, Winfield's mayor, and Miller's Coak's mayor, those five agree upon this person. That's what the law says. And we could both just say, oh, we...
So, you have one, you have one person within a, within a county regardless of how many incorporated cities you've got?
Those cities have a mayor and they have a word in helping pick that person. That's how that's, that's how that's done.
I would not throw that into the mix while you're trying to, while you're trying to work out a relationship with the city for fire protection. I would save that for, for step two. That, that would be my suggestion.
Well, he could be the emergency manager, but we just need to, we just need ourself as a county, we control our volunteers. We look, we overlook our volunteers, that's what I'm getting at.
Why do we not control them now? I mean, fund them and...
Well, Jimmy, I know that, but you know, you know, like fire chief meetings, we should, you know, if we, we're putting our own, we could go meet the annex out here, the extension office and then that way we could, you know, tensions are high at those meetings sometimes and I'm not gonna sit and tell they're not.
They're not, they don't have to go to the meeting.
Well, it's get ripped if they don't.
I feel like the county fire chief will be in charge and help coordinate those volunteer fire departments, because they only fight fire in the county outside of city limits unless they were caught in on mutual aid, you know?
That won't be the case if this county department goes in. They are required because it's, the city is entitled county, they are required to go to the city also.
Oh, the city fires?
The county fire department. If we go to a county fire department, they are required to go to the city because it is in the county.
I'm, I'm not aware of that.
I didn't know that either. I know they help each other in Hopkins County some, so...
That is, that is the way it works.
I figured it might be a mutual aid agreement or something.
But it doesn't work the other way where the city's required to go?
Nope.
I'd like to know where that model exists.
We can set up a, a mutual aid with them for, for them to come to the county if we need them, but with, since the county depart, it's a county department, it, they have to go, they have to come into the city if they get a call. In fact, Andy said right there and told us that when he was here from Hopkins County.
I think that that's the way that they finally agreed to work together with the reciprocal arrangement.
But they had to, they had to do that and the city finally come back and said, okay, if y'all need us, we'll set up mutual aid with you and, and we'll come to the county. So...
I, I would tend to disagree with that either. Good morning, Marcus, how are you?
Good morning, my own.
Uh, make sure...
Yeah, it's on. I think what you're getting into here is in my perspective as the chief in the county, if Mount Pleasant, anytime Mount Pleasant's had a big working structure fire and they needed more manpower, more trucks, i.e., I'm referring to stuff at Prefort's Pilgrim's, some large houses, I remember burning over on East First Street or Third, we were there for that. Once their men are exhausted, and it happens, and they needed more manpower, they would then contact the county, send out what they call a all-county page, and then we would respond into the city in the event that we start a county fire department. My opinion is, and I have stated this from day one, as a volunteer fire department, we will still be required to come into the city if they call for help. This is my opinion and this is just my opinion. I will not be the fire chief that tells my department to not respond to a call in the city when these people in the city pay county taxes as well as everybody in this county. So, therefore, they are paying for that. Either way you go, if we start a county fire department or we stay with the city, the citizens of Mount Pleasant are paying Titus County taxes and it is our obligation to provide them with a service. And if Mount Pleasant is busy on a call or needs help with a call, it will be the obligation of the Titus County Fire Department or volunteers, however this may go, to respond to that call in a timely manner and do their job. I mean, I will never tell a citizen of Titus County that we will not respond to an emergency. I don't care where it is in Titus County or a neighboring county, if they need help, we will respond. This part about making a, we're gonna have to make a decision on this if, because we've been here many a times and this board has told us, we fund y'all, but we are not over the county volunteer fire departments. When everything was going on with a department that might have to be shut down, we were informed. We don't have the authority to do that. We all have our own individual chiefs, we have our own leadership, which will remain intact. If we start bringing in a county fire chief that says, okay, we're gonna do this, 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 and this, which yes, we have requirements that we meet under our contract, some of those we may need to relook at next year. We are all trying to do the best we can to meet the contract needs. Like I said, we might need to sit down as a group and renegotiate what we're required to do annually and biannually. That may all be exactly what we need to do, but there may be a couple of things we can tweak. We have tweaked a couple of them since we started this, but we probably need as a group sit down next year and relook at that and make sure we're all doing the best thing we can do. Mr. Applewhite, as for your deal, several years ago, and it went away several years ago, this was back in my time as a volunteer with Mount Pleasant, and it's been several years since I was there, there was an organization formed that was called Titus County Firefighters Association. A few of us have revisited that and we're trying to bring that association back to life to get the members of the departments back together in a unity to where we all serve the county and we're not arguing and bickering amongst each other. There's not a lot of that going on, but what does happen is there's a lot of us that don't know each other anymore because the only time we'll see each other is in a 10-minute walk by at a fire. That's not a good thing. We should be having a picnic and we should be having some kind of deal as firefighters and yes, I included the city of Mount Pleasant in that. That has come up and has been started. The first board was appointed. We have brought this to the judge. The judge has suggested we wait till this contract stuff's over before we really bring that to the commissioners. That board is out there, that board will be elected by the volunteers at a later date. Judge, can I keep talking about this or should I?
Sure.
Our vision is, and currently I sit as the president of Titus County Firefighters Association, Jerry Ward's vice president, Justin's secretary, is that as far down as we went? These positions, once it's up and running, will be elected by the volunteers or the Titus County Firefighters Association, which we did include Mount Pleasant because they are firefighters within our county. We want to have meetings, we want to have meetings with all the volunteers. We have a member of every volunteer fire department represented in our meetings, Talco has a member there even though they're a separate contract. We all have a member on our, in our meetings. We've kinda put that on hold, waiting to see, as Judge Lee said, till we find out. Our goal is to, what Dana's talking about, if a department's struggling with getting their hose tests done or can't get their pictures or something in their contract, let us help you. If you need pictures of your SCBA's taken and you're out of town working for three weeks and it's gotta be done, let one of us go help you. There's enough volunteers in this county, we can help each other, we can go take pictures. If you need your hose testing done, we can get it set up. There's several things we can do to help each other. Let us make, the Titus County Firefighters Association, make sure we're all doing the best job we can for the whole county, whether it be Five Star Cook, well, Sugar Hill, whoever we are, if we need to go help them, we're brothers, we will go help them. And that's what we're trying to get established with the Titus County Firefighters Association. But if you're gonna bring a chief in and say, hey, you're now gonna be over all the volunteer fire departments, I think we're gonna have a problem. That's all I've got, thank you.
Marcus, I appreciate you getting, y'all getting that association up on that fire, I do appreciate that.
And we're ready to move on that. Like I said, the judge just thought it would be too much. Jerry Ward and I come and sit with the judge and we're just waiting and we'll bring that back up at a later date to the court and some of the things. We've been looking at that because the county tasked us with trying to figure out how to do the pay for next year and that's some of the stuff we're working on.
And I think at that time we had that conversation, I thought we were a lot closer to having a, a deal hammered out with the city.
And I agree. If the court would like, we will come back and present that, y'all tell us when you want to and we'll get that up, we'll get that kicked off as soon as the court would like us to do it, I think.
I think that'd be great for everybody, so I know everybody up here listening to that.
So, are y'all good with us moving forward with our association and this will be a non-money? We've decided it'll be a non, we're not gonna take any money. If we're doing a picnic or something like that, we're just gonna have all the departments pitch in, that way we don't have to file a, what is it, Justin?
501(c)(3).
A 501(c)(3) or anything like that. So, but if y'all have any questions about the association, I'll get with Jerry today, Justin will put it out, we'll start making everything and we'll start moving forward with our association.
I believe that, you know, that, I think y'all, we should be in contact also with this pending deal too, and I would appreciate y'all being involved in it too.
With what?
The, the fire, you know, just anything fire-related that we could, you know, work together with?
Yes, sir. And, and y'all will all be welcome to any of our meetings, I mean, this is for everybody. I mean, this is to make Titus County firefighters the best we can be.
Do you have a place that you meet?
We haven't got that far yet, we've held our last couple of meetings in my office, you know, we haven't got that far yet.
You know, we got to build an extension office that would be usable for that too.
Okay. I'll get Jerry and all on that.
That way you have probably audio and video and all that up there.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, thank you.
Hold on, back on that subject about having the county fire chief being over all the volunteers, you thought that would be heading for a problem. Would it be the right of the county fire chief though to set rules much like Chief McCray has done? You know, if you're not trained at this level, don't show up to these fires? In other words, is that relationship between county fire chief and volunteers gonna look different from Chief McCray over the volunteer departments, I say over them, in his ability to decide who can stay and who doesn't need to be there?
Well, that chief would have control of his scenes. Now, once it goes down to if they don't need to be there, then we're in charge as a volunteer department and, you know, there's different stipulations for paid guys than there is volunteers. And we have to abide by what the Texas fire marshal says that volunteers are required to do. We can be held to a higher accountability if that's what the county chooses to do, but I just don't want to cause conflicts between a new chief in any of the departments we have and we start losing what volunteers we have now. I'm just, I'm afraid if we come in and we start making a lot of drastic changes, that the few of us that are still out there and running day to day may say, that's just, I'm tired, I'm ready to go. I told Justin yesterday, I'm tired, I'm ready to go. Today I woke up different and I'm not ready to go. But it's, we just gotta get this deal worked out, everybody's tired of it. I mean, yes, I'm supportive in having the extra people there and I like the fact that we can get more men from Mount Pleasant than probably what we're gonna be able to hire with the county, but I understand y'all's side of it, that y'all only have so much money to spend. And so, that's above my head and that's what y'all have to work out. We're here to do what we need to do for the citizens of Titus County and we will continue to do that to the best to do that to the best of our ability as long as we can.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Come on up.
Just had one quick question here. My name's Justin Hargrove, I'm the fire chief at NorTex Fire Department. For roughly 20 years now, we've had a fire contract that didn't have an escape clause, so to speak. If y'all come up with something that y'all are comfortable with, whether it's 1.2, 1.3, whatever, for the length of the contract, why do you need an escape clause if you've decided you're comfortable with that amount? We've gone for 20 years without it.
I think it was in the current fire contract.
We all said y'all hadn't had a way out, so that's what I'm confused about, why this is such a sticking point with you guys now, that we have a way out when y'all say we don't have a way out.
Well, I don't think anybody's ever thought about an escape clause in the current contract. I don't think that subject ever came up, but I do know that the city is against that, even though the city feels like, I mean, even though the county feels like it's important. If, for whatever reason, we find ourselves in a financial position where we can no longer afford to pay that that we agreed upon, that's why this court wanted to have that clause in there.
Again, like I say, if y'all can come up with numbers that you're comfortable with and they agree to it, again, I think that y'all should be comfortable with doing that for the length of your contract, and so. I just, I'd hate to see this all fall apart because, again, a couple of things get stuck that nobody's willing to budge on. So again, the whole concept of negotiation is y'all taking something back to the city, they look at it, take it back to y'all, and so far from what I gathered from all this is, y'all keep waiting on them to send y'all stuff and never send anything back, and then saying, well, we can't get any. Again, negotiation is y'all taking things back and forth, so I would encourage you, before we post this stuff, and I think y'all decided that, that don't exhaust these means until you've decided, hey, this is not how it's gonna go, and then, yes, you have to move forward in a timely manner. But if, I know it's just in talk, but using dates already of saying, had to have this done by November 15th, that's gonna send a bad message to them, that, well, they say they're negotiating, but they're already hiring somebody, so. I just, again, words, how you describe it to them, and your talk with them is gonna really affect on where they believe you, if you're truly faithfully negotiating, or you're just kind of kicking it till the meeting on the 14th and you've already made your mind up.
Thank you. Appreciate your emails also. All right. Do you want to accomplish anything else on this item number one today? I'm assuming there's no action to come out of number one, no formal action. However, I believe what we've decided here today is that Commissioner Parchman, Commissioner Applewhite will put some requests in writing, submit those to the city manager, and say that on November the 14th, if that is your intention, you plan to move forward with the hiring of a county fire chief. Does that sound right?
I'd like to see that before they present it to him.
Yeah, and I think that all five of us should look at that and be okay with what it says there. And Barbara.
Well, I think it's important that John Mark will, that's the county attorney.
Yes.
Because that's the problem we had initially, was that contract didn't have out, and it also did not have any limitation or doggone meaning. So my suggestion, I don't have to look at it, it's at y'all's pleasure.
Well, again, I don't think this step one is the final contract. I think that that contract has been now whittled down to basically how much you're gonna pay each year, and are you gonna have an escape clause? If you can't work those two out, the other stuff doesn't matter. So start with those. If you can get those biggies done and shake hands, man, that's 98% of the battle, and then we let the fine terms of the contract get reviewed by everyone. Anything else on this? In your opinions, guys, is that a no action for today on this? Table it?
I'm good with that.
How about, how about you table this one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion we table it.
Motion to table item number one.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. Item number two, I just want to introduce you to a concept, the county assistance district. And in case any of you are aware, or you may not be aware, there is an election going on right now, we all know that, but specifically in Camp County. Camp County is voting on whether or not to form a county assistance district. This does require the approval of the citizens, and it can be done at any major, at any major election time. If you were to be interested in this, the next time you would have this opportunity to vote would be in the spring election in May, when we have the city and school board, things like that. So I just wanted to introduce you to this concept. I think it's interesting way to be able to raise some additional monies that could be applied to specific purposes. For purposes of this discussion, my suggestion would be, it might be a way to fund some fire protection, whether you're paying a contract to the city, whether you're developing your own county fire department. This is a two-page informational piece that Camp County put out. I'd like to read it to you so that you'll have a better understanding of what a county assistance district is. A district created, if approved, if approved by voters, to produce funds from sales tax to be used only for specific purposes allowed in the state law. The Camp County Commissioners Court voted on August 10th to place this proposition on the ballot. What can the funds be used for? Texas state law allows county assistance district funds to be used for construction, maintenance, or improvement of roads or highways, provision of law enforcement and detention services, maintenance or improvement of libraries, museums, parks, and other rec facilities, promotion of economic development and tourism, firefighting and fire prevention services, and provision of services that benefit the public welfare. We need money in just about all those areas, except for the, except for the library. So you've got several major places that these funds could be used for. In Camp County, they are committing to using these funds to apply towards their county roads. What are the boundaries of the proposed district? The proposed district would include all areas, all areas of Camp County that are not within municipal limits of the cities of Pittsburgh and Rocky Mound. Similar situation here in Titus County, you would probably say it includes all of Titus County, except for incorporated city of Mount Pleasant, Talco, and Winfield. Where would the funds come from? Sales tax, not from property tax. If approved by the voters, businesses that collect sales tax outside of the municipal limits of those cities would collect sales tax at a rate of 8.25% instead of the current 6.75%. That's how we have it here. Right now, if you're, we're not aware of it, if you buy something inside the city, you're paying eight and a quarter percent. If you buy something from a business that is located in the county and not within one of those incorporated cities, you're only paying 6.75. So you would bring that 6.75 up to as high as 8.25%. That'd be a point and a half jump. So the folks in the county would pay the same sales tax on purchases made outside the city limits that people are paying inside the city limits. It would all come up to eight and a quarter. What's it going to cost me? Currently, a $10 purchase for taxable goods outside the city limits results in sales tax of 68 cents. If approved, that same purchase would result in sales tax of 83 cents. This would not cause any goods or services that are currently not taxable to become taxable, it just changes that rate. So in that case of a $10 purchase, you've got a swing there of about, looks like about 15 cents. What, what could the, what could the funds be used for? Again, they're using it for roads. How much revenue would this generate? Now, these are Pittsburgh numbers. The Comptroller's Office conducted a data analysis resulting in a conservative estimate of approximately 156,000 annually, based on current sales data of businesses outside the municipal limits of those cities. So in their case, it's gonna raise them conservatively 156,000. The lady that I spoke with at the Comptroller's Office said this does not include certain taxpayers, I mean, certain tax-collecting businesses that only file on an annual basis. They would obviously have very small annual collections. Neither did it include, I'm gonna call it catalog sales items, Amazon purchases and things like that from people that were located outside of those cities. Who gets to vote on the proposal? All registered voters who reside within the boundaries of the district. In other words, folks in Talco, Winfield, and the city of Mount Pleasant would not vote on this. This is just folks that are taxed as county residents only. So that's an introduction to that. If you were to decide to put this on the ballot in May, you have to back up, what was it, Barbara, 90 days or 60 days? It was February, because you'd have to, it would have to be 60 days prior to when voting started. So your May election vote, although it's in May, you have, as we all know, early voting that starts well before that, at least two weeks prior to the actual day of the vote. And so backing 60 days from that, you would have to declare this election sometime in the month of February in order to do this.
February 17.
February 17. In talking to the lady at the Comptroller's Office, she ran me some general numbers, and you would think that you could take that 156,000 and just multiply it by the, by the differential between our county size and the Pittsburgh county size. It doesn't quite work that way. We didn't get quite that much. I think our figure ended up being somewhere between, somewhere around 270,000. Again, it didn't include catalog, catalog sales. So there's the possibility, if voters approved it, if you were interested in doing it, of raising an additional 270,000, maybe as high as 300,000, maybe even a little more than that, by bringing our sales tax up to equal that of the city. So some of you may be desperately opposed to an increase in sales tax, but that is a way, without affecting property taxes, to bring in some additional dollars. I don't know what kind of action you would want to take today. My suggestion would be, you wait and see how this Camp County election goes. Let's see how the folks in Camp County like this or not. I don't have any numbers from other counties that have approved this. I know Marion County has, has had this for a couple of years. It has worked well for them. I don't know what's going to happen in Camp County. They obviously were promoting that on social media and putting out this informational piece, you know, with the pro, talking about the pros, are we bringing in additional monies without touching property taxes, and it better shares the load amongst everybody within that county. You also know that there are people that will come from out of your county to make purchases within, within the county that would pay that additional sales tax that don't even live within that district. So that's as much as I know about it right now. I spent, along with Barbara, maybe 20 minutes on the phone with an attorney out of Dallas who's with a large firm there that, I won't say they specialize in this, but they have done quite a few of these. I also reached out to Bob Bass at Allison Bass. You know, Bob has helped us with, you know, with some of our boundaries here within Titus County when we were going through rearrangement of our voting precincts after the census. Bob said, yes, they have done a couple of these, but it had been a while. It's not something like they do on a regular basis, but he said he would be happy to help us. The firm in Dallas, I believe, has done this more than Allison Bass. I think we could work on a hourly basis with that law firm. I would expect that fee, based on what the Camp County judge told me, I would expect our fee to be somewhere south of $30,000, one-time expense, to help us put that election together. So I did put this down here as an action item, but we don't have to take action. I just wanted you to be aware that there is such a thing as this county assistance district and basically how it works. Any questions, comments, action?
I'll make a motion, we don't take any action on that.
Okay. Is that a table, or are we just taking no action?
I say we table it.
I'll give you either one you want, I just want to be sure if you want me to bring it back up, or you want to put it to rest forever.
I'll make a motion, we table that. Sounds like a fancy way to raise taxes to me. I don't like that.
If you feel that way, just say, I don't want to do it. I want to kill this thought before it goes any further.
Let's drop it. So we want, table it.
Make a motion, we table it.
Okay. Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to table item number two. Second, by Commissioner Parker. Any further discussion or questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is there any other business today? Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Just briefly, I would sincerely ask that you, in these discussions, you're talking about what the fire department needs, or the city demands, but nowhere in there are any of you talking about the taxpayers, ever, in this discussion. It's always about what the city wants. None of you have ever asked what the county, like what I, as a county taxpayer, what I want, what services I want, nor do you ask if I'm willing to pay more in sales taxes or property taxes. I seem to be secondary in your conversation, when I should be a primary, when you come to me, especially Commissioner Parker, you're my commissioner. You don't come to us asking what we want. You tell us what we should want, and I don't like that we're not a major part of your discussion right now. And I would also sincerely ask that you reread the contract that was proposed and rescinded, because if you read it, you will see that the county completely ceded all authority and responses within the volunteer fire departments to the city, which would make them secondary. And it was, what they said is that the initial contract was that the county volunteer fire departments were responsible for certain activities, and that the city would be their secondary response. The new contract you signed and then rescinded said the city is the primary in all commands, and that the volunteers are secondary if they're requested. What is the point in a volunteer fire department, in volunteer fire chiefs, if they don't have a job to do, if they have no authority within the county? What is their purpose? So I would ask you to look at that when you're thinking about this, this contract moving forward with the city, because I don't understand what, what they would be doing, honestly. It'd just be the city taking over the volunteers. And if that's what you want to do, fine. I mean, I don't support that at all. But it's not just about the money, it's about the authority and the jobs, and who's, who's always in command, who's not in command. And I also don't hear that discussion going on, so I just, please, look at that again and make that part of the conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Cut, you got a comment?
No, I don't have to worry here, thank you. Judge Lee, I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just a reminder to commissioners and to our employees, I sent an email out to you on October the 25th to remind you about open enrollment for medical, dental, and vision coverage with TAC. Open enrollment will begin November 9th and will end November 16th. We're gonna do it online, again, like we've done in the past. We will have additional information, the payroll checks that will go out tomorrow. This is just a reminder to you of those dates.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. When you're ready.
Marcus.
Yes, sir.
As far as, to answer the lady's question, as far As far as, to answer the lady's question, as far, in my opinion, as far as the city-county contract goes, what she's talking about, I believe, is where it says if the city responds, they will take command of that situation. That's the way it's been, there's been no change. As volunteers, what are we required? Our main goal is grass fires, car fires, and support, support being a key word. We do not have the volunteers to handle a structural fire by ourselves. Even if we put, if we send every county fire department we have, we get two or three people that are trained, capable, structural firefighters. That won't work. So yes, when Mount Pleasant responds, then they have the personnel and the people there. If we have a county, the fire department, then hopefully we have enough people there, I don't know what that number will be. But to answer her question, the volunteers aren't going away, we still have plenty to do, we bring water and I will put this county up against any county about how much water we can move quickly, because we've done it. So yes, Mount Pleasant's fighting the fire, we're bringing water, we're supporting them, and that's our role as volunteer firefighters. If your house is on fire and you get me there, you're going to get somebody spraying water from the outside and that's about all you're going to get, because I'm not going in a structural fire no more, not unless I absolutely have to, to get somebody out, and then I better have people there with me. If you're on a car wreck on 67 East in the Cookville District and Mount Pleasant's not able to respond and I've got two or three people trapped, let's face it, guys, in gear and I'm not the healthiest person, I've probably got about 10 or 15 minutes to do all I can and then I'm exhausted. So yes, at that point, Mount Pleasant needs to be there or somebody else to support us. The volunteers can only do so much. During the day, at this point right now, I have nobody, zero volunteers in Cookville District that can respond to a call until about 3:30 this afternoon, and then I have people available, one. So when you stand up here and you say, they're going to be primary, there is times they're going to be primary because there's nobody else coming, whether it's city or county, that's who you're going to have to rely on. Sugar Hill right now may have one person. Justin, how many you got? One available during the day. What's one person going to do on an emergency scene by themselves? So that's why the city or whoever it may be has to come and do that, because we don't have the personnel. And if we don't have adequate personnel on a county department, if it goes that way, then we're going to be in a bind. And I'm not, I'm not up here to say anything, I'm just trying to answer her question, as my opinion as a chief of this county. And seconds count. When you're trapped in a car and getting you out saves your life, if you're in a house fire, seconds count. And we all got to remember that when we're thinking about that, that seconds counts. And yes, it's a lot of money, but seconds count. And I don't want to forget that. If there's a way to make an agreement with the city and it costs us a little bit more money, I mean, I'm no mathematician, but if we spend all our ARCA money on starting this county department and if it was 1.5 million, I'm just throwing that number because it's simple, easy math for me, if it cost us $6 million to start it, which I don't know what that exact cost was, I know that's something we threw out there, 12 years at $500,000 extra a year before we ever see anything different. If the city was at 1.5 and we spend $6 million, that's, to get our money back and even break even, we're looking at 12 years. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
I'm glad, because in my brain, it kind of does and I may be way off, but something to consider, 12 years before we even start seeing a profit or anything out of that, provided we can run the county fire department for a million dollars a year. But y'all all know those costs, so we don't know what that's going to be and we won't know until we start running it. So, just something else to think about. Hope I answered your question.
Did we vote to adjourn? Okay, we're ready to call the vote. All right, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.